All right, good evening and welcome to the Sheriff's County Commission meeting on today, Thursday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six P. M. We'd like to start off tonight with a quick prayer from Pastor Eddie Ortest.
Thank you.
Sanders, Anderson.
I'll begin with a word for it. The following we come for you tonight. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to wake up free country, Lord, and the greatest nation on earth, as far as I'm concerned. We thank you for the many blessings of living here in America and being able to participate in our government. Thank you for those who serve here at the county level. Thank you for their willingness to reach a commitment to serve in this capacity. And I would just ask for your blessing upon tonight, that you give wisdom, Lord, and direction and guidance as perhaps discussions are had and votes are cast. I pray that you bless and all that is said and done. Thank you once again for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you, Lord, for your son, thank you for Jesus Christ. In his name we pray, amen.
Everybody can remain standing. But I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Amen. Okay, approval minutes, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, budget presentation. Are there any objections that is approved? February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, budget presentation. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Sheriff. Objection, that is approved for March first. Objection, that is approved for approval minutes for March second. Three regular meetings, are there any objections?
I have an edit.
One edit.
Item number twelve, county ambulance dispatch. All county-owned and operated ambulances to be dispatched from the E nine one-one. I believe this tab made a amendment to that emotion that our legal counsel draft an actual statement and guidance. I think that's number seventeen. Seventeen, yeah. So, all these things listed.
If anybody's online, you could self- mute yourself. It'd be great, I appreciate it. All right.
That's the only change I have.
Anybody have anything else? All right, with that edit, there are no objections. The other meeting then for March second is approved. Approval accounts payable for March ninth, twenty twenty-three to now at six. That is approved. Counts payable for March sixteenth, twenty-three, dollars and one cent if there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of manual checks for March tenth, twenty twenty-three, if you have any objections, approved for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, one dollars and eighty-four cents, if there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of March twenty-three, amount of two hundred dollars, six hundred and twenty dollars, eight nine cents, if there are no objections, that is approved for approval of paid road. Twenty twenty-three, now, six hundred and thirty dollars and twelve cents, if there are no objections, that is approved. Are there any announcements?
Just one quick change. He's got quite a few items, and he's agreed to that, so thank you, Sheriff. And then, just to be aware, we do have public hearing thirty and seven, so just to be explicit, we can't be out of time with votes. Trial number four has been postponed.
That's postponed, but we do have number three and number five. All right. All right. All right, we're going to move into the comment. We'll start at the top of this mark. You want to come aboard, sir?
I'm going to read a poem. For what I've doing, Satan Almighty, the young creator of heaven and soil, and the invisible and invisible, I am begotten of Father, whom all things will be unmade, who for man and his damnation incarnated, rise up from hell, and sit on the left hand of his Father. King, you have it to the end, hear our Satan prayer, our anti-nicy creed, hear our Satan prayer for the coming of seed, unholy ghost over Lord and take her life.
Thank you. Next woman, Jane Tab.
Oh, wait, I'm not done. I still got three minutes, don't I?
Yes, I don't know.
Three days, week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that's all. About that, we tired, man. Yeah, I'm right, that's me, but working, I'm right, man. Oh, shit. I'm sorry, it wasn't good, man. When I first started, I was thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking. I'm thinking, I'm thinking. Everyone, you know, I'm going to put this on my, I'm thinking, I'm thinking. I don't buy it. I'm thinking, I'm thinking. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks for the day, Dave.
David Tab, my fellow resident taxpayer, taking the following comments. I will repeat what I state at the end of my public comments. It is hard to be safe within the current county commission. My prayers go out to the general public and those who travel through our nine one-one coverage of the county. Your life is in jeopardy solely by the decisions of the current county commissioner. Under the finance directory, transfer of Y twenty-three funds from personal service to travel in the amount of five thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. There is no documentation as to why or how this transfer should be allowed to occur. There's no transparency. Request J C S A for eight thousand six hundred forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents for the month of January. I believe this has already been paid in February. There's no documents of where this expense is to be funded from. The public has been, has not been informed of the ESA transition project outline and or guidelines that are required to be followed. Presentation twelve, unfinished business, M O U, Shepherd University Emergency Action Plan, no documents. The public has a right to review an M O U as a matter of public record. There is no description within the agenda, so far. You cannot take action. New business under presentation fourteen, review agenda policy. You have it in the packet, but you don't have what you're going to do, or what you're going to say, or what you're going to change, and you have no description that that can happen to them. Course funded letter, letter from the West Virginia Public Service Commission, dispersment of wireless E nine one-one subscription. The posting failed to alert the public, the actual dispersment of the amount of three hundred thirty-two thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-three, sixty-three cents. It appears that the county commission is hiding this large quarterly review without fully disclosure where the money is held and or used. As a frequent user of wireless devices, I hereby request a full disclosure. Again, it is hard to be safe within the current county commission. You guys need to straighten up. This nine one-one subscription fee is somewhat over one point four million dollars. You've hidden it from the public. The public has paid it through the requirement through the state. Whereas, we've been doing it. It just didn't happen now. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars. Does it go to the nine one-one center? Does it go to the sheriff's department? Does it go to emergency services? You have failed us. This is our money, not yours. And when are y'all going to learn it? We can call you. And I encourage everyone in here, because up until last few months, I'm the only one that's been here. Now, you've got a lot more people that are concerned about what's going on and why you aren't listening. Whether we have prayer here or not, doesn't bother me. We can better stop listening, they said, to listen to the God.
Thanks for having me, Jackie Miller.
Good evening. In light of the commission's decision to diminish and or remove certified actionable and proximal life-saving support tools and services from the Bakerton Fire Department, I am requesting that my insured household be fully compensated by this commission with a home use defibrillator to be used at my nine one-one address. Perhaps this commission originally sought to improve existing emergency services, but improvement means to make something better for everyone, not just some. Doubling and tripling my potential wait time for certified and actionable life-saving help is not an improvement to my household. It would be different if Bakerton Fire Department never existed, but it did, and it had full-time actionable life-saving services. In fact, in twenty seventeen, it is my understanding that the J C E S A increased services for Bakerton and Middleway stations to include weekends. Why that improvement? Maybe because people have heart attacks on weekends, and cash-paying tourists largely come on weekends to fill the state tourism coffers with revenue to the tune of twenty percent. If my senior life doesn't mean much to this commission, then maybe the lives of tourists that come to bike and recreate the river do. Improvements were perhaps needed, but did you think that sacrificing a farmer's opportunity to live another day was the right thing to do? Do you think there would be no emergency services impacted with doubling new development plans without protecting existing citizens in this county? Let me be clear to this commission. You will hear from one of the two surviving seniors in my household, should one of us not get certified in actionable life-saving services or tools that were once there and now are not at the behest of this commission. That is perhaps an unintended, but a real liability. This commission can either purchase a defibrillator, or maybe, at fifteen hundred dollars through A E D Superstore, or restore Bakerton Fire Department with actual improvements to the original seven-day-a-week service, because all your citizens and tourists are worth it. Thank you. I'm from the Harper's Ferry District.
Our next is Denise Dick.
Yeah, I don't think I'm going to sit, but I just wanted to let the commission know that I sent you on email today regarding who voted for the current EMS plan. I think it might be a little unfair that we're blaming the commission for it if you all didn't vote on it. So, I would like to know who approved it, who approved removing the staff, and who is implementing it in the county. Otherwise, we want the staffing back.
Next, you have Jerry Wines.
I'm Jerry Wines from Harper's Ferry. I'm here not just for myself, but for all the ones who signed the petition wanting EMS at the other stations. Have any one of you monitored the calls since March first since this one in place? If not, I think you should, and then you will realize why it's so important these two fire departments, Blue Ridge and Middleway, need EMS. The number of calls they receive daily, and the people in these areas, need a close-by EMS service. Let me inform you of a few calls that I have monitored myself. Last week, it took a unit twenty-five minutes to arrive on a scene on the mountain area. This happened not only once, but twice last week. On Sunday, there was a trouble-breathing patient who lives only two minutes from Company Five Station. They waited so long for a EMS unit, the family ended up transporting them to the hospital by private auto. I'm sure there is a lot of folks who are transporting themselves instead of having to wait so long for a unit to arrive. Why don't you put yourself in that driver's seat, transporting your loved one to the hospital, because it's taken the EMS unit so long to arrive in these areas that don't have a EMS unit? Guarantee y'all would think different of putting a unit there on the mountain in the middle way. On Sunday also, there was a car accident with a patient ejected on Chester Hill Road. The fire truck arrived long before the EMS unit even showed up. I cannot give you the exact time, because I was there with that patient, keeping him calm, telling him help was on the way. But let me tell you, it was forever, it seemed like forever, which I knew it was, before that ambulance help showed up to help this person that was trapped unrevealed. If they were stationed on that mountain, they would have been there in no time at all. This situation alone should show each of you, time can mean a matter of life or death. Time. Each one of you have seemed to have a lot of that on your hands. So, I want each of you, speed up the time and put EMS units at these locations, at these stations that there is needed. You seem to be in charge of our county. You can do that, if you wanted to. So, seems to me you would want that at these stations, because it matters life or death. But it seems like to me, it's beginning to feel like we are being discriminated by our very own county commissioners.
Thank you. Anybody on line, sir? All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number two, Tina Renner, Pittsburgh Forest.
Good evening. I have two backfill positions that I have filled. One is starting March twentieth, that is Danielle Stickle. One is starting April third, which is Melissa Garas. Starting salaries are thirty-five thousand each, and they, like I said, it's budget-neutral and it's backfill position.
And both of them start March twentieth?
One's starting March twentieth, one's April third. Did you say Melissa's? Yes, yes.
Okay, so, March, I'm sorry, I have a short time seeing this one.
Yeah.
March twentieth, and the other one was April third. And April third was?
Melissa.
Okay. All right, I'll move to approve Danielle Stickle, an amount of thirty-five thousand, a seventy-hour work week, the hire date is March twentieth.
You're going to do it individually?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Because they're too different.
Right. I'll second that motion, and I see clerk. That's what I'm trying to come up with here. Yeah, circuit clerk, you have seventy hours, and it's your plan to transition them to eighty once we do the new budget?
If I'm addressed to do so, I'll take another consideration.
Okay.
But they were hired at thirty-five hours, it just says.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, I saw that circle too. Okay, that's why I put it in. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I would like also move a motion for the hire of Melissa.
Garas. Garas, G R A J A.
Raj.
Rush.
Rush.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. An amount of thirty-five thousand, seventy-hour work week, the start date is April. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming. Moving on to Tom Hanson, Sheriff. We have several items on the agenda. Have a closer.
Good evening, commissioners. First item on my, on my, the agenda is hire of a new tax deputy. We had a tax deputy that transferred from our office to clerk's office, and we need to hire her replacement. Her name is Emily Alonse Newman. She'll be starting on March twentieth, and an eighty-hour position at thirty-four thousand dollars.
I'm moving to approve the hire of Emily Newman, beginning March twentieth, twenty twenty-three, eighty, it's an eighty-hour position, salary is thirty-four thousand.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second one is request to hire two part-time trip guards, as we talked about during the budget, trips are going through the roof. In fact, I had two court bailiffs, I'd take a trip last night to get back till one o'clock this afternoon. Their names are Colin Wakeham, W A K E H A M, and Dana Ames. They're starting as soon as possible, a part-time rate of seventeen dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Okay. I'll move to approve, to Coke, Cody, or?
Uh-huh.
I can't remember. Wakeham and Danny Ames, starting salary, their hourly rate is seventeen fifty, the look at the start date. Next item, oh, I'm sorry, I need a second. My apologies, I thought you had one. Yeah, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, there you go. Okay, I have a letter, bank securities bonding letter. We need to go over the amounts we have. Bank of Charlton account, twenty-six million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Twenty-five million in pledged securities, being considered, and the Jefferson Security Bank, six hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. One point two million in pledged securities. United Bank, three million, nine hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six, with five hundred, five million, five hundred thousand in pledged securities. And last, the truist account of fourteen million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, thirty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents, with twelve million in pledged securities. Taking consideration of upcoming bank transfers, recommend a recommendation that the pledged securities, Jefferson Security Bank be decreased to eight hundred thousand, increase the truist to sixteen million. In accordance with the memorandum dated twenty-eight, twenty-eight September, the sixth, returning bonding dispositories, the chief tax deputy, has continued to monitor all accounts on a monthly basis.
Can you tell me a reason, you know, maybe privileged information, I don't know, with the banks, why this change?
We have more money in the account than the securities cover. And we're moving money, we're moving money into different accounts.
No, I just like to keep everything.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. Do we need a motion to approve your? I believe you do. All right. I will be happy to move a motion to, as presented by the sheriff, for the bank securities bonding for the county bank.
So.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next item is something the county commission, I guess you could say, tabled till the end of March, is my deputies losing their accrued leave because of them not being able to take leave with manpower constraints.
Sure, yeah.
And we've talked about moving it to three hundred hours for this year, but that'll only help this year, and next year's going to come with the same reason, same problem again, because you're going to accrue the same amount of leave. I'm asking the county, look at the, look at the leave they have accrued, and because they can't take the leave because of manpower constraints that you pay the deputies for their leave so they don't lose it. See how it's supposed to end, end in fourteen days.
Do you have a number?
No, ma'am, I don't. I can, I can, I'll get the number and get it to you, I'm just looking for a motion that we can go forward with that.
I guess I have a question, Tom, is Sheriff Hanson, is?
Yes, ma'am.
Would there be, if there was an extension on this, there's some small numbers for some of these deputies, what was carried over. Would it be feasible for them to take that time?
I believe it would, but there's some that have larger amounts, and, but, if you, what I'm saying is that if you extend it again, we're going to come right to the same problem again next year.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking, is it feasible? So, some of them have as small as one hour, and some have as many as twenty-nine hours.
Right.
So. I'm quite sure the ones that have small amounts, one or two or three hours, can take it between now and the end of the month, but let somebody go home early or whatever. But, yeah, the ones that have large, because I don't want them to lose, I don't want our deputies to lose leave. Can we, can we pay them?
You entered into a brief extension the last time. I would recommend that you enter into another brief extension and review that particular issue. The issue that we reviewed the last time was whether or not days mark eight hours or ten hours. And I would just report to the commission that every place that I see the matter addressed in, in state law, it's always eight hours. So, I don't, there is no particular law that says a day equals eight hours, but everybody that deals with time and labor and stuff, it's, it's.
Okay. Well, I will not move a motion to extend this.
No, but I guess they were just asking, even if we extend it, it is, can we pay it, or it's just extending it, the option? I guess that was what you were asking.
Well, that's what, I would prefer to review that particular question.
Later.
And that may also give some of those deputies, with your idea that they might be able to follow up on this list.
Yes, we have one that right now has thirteen extra hours from December. We have one that has twenty, one that has twenty-nine. All others are one and two or three hours. So, yeah, I mean.
How many? Thirty days, sixty days? What do you think, sixty, thirty? Sixty? How about we do sixty, we'll be fine time.
Fair enough, Sheriff.
That's fine. All right.
I just don't want them to lose their leave.
I don't need it. I'll move that we move the, push the date to, it's, so we originally moved it to March thirtieth, right? March thirty-first?
Yes.
So, we'll move it to May thirty-first.
Okay.
I'm moving, we moved the date for the accrual deadline to May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and that'll give us time for our legal counsel, our legal counsel to determine whether or not we can pay out the, the old accrual hours, I guess.
Okay, so we're going with May thirtieth or thirty-first?
May thirty-first.
Okay. A minute. May thirty-first.
Yeah, there you go.
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
My next item on the agenda is, I'm going to let you know that with the passing of Captain Cole. And that'll give us time for legal counsel, or legal counsel to determine whether or not we can pay out the, the old accrual hours, I guess.
Okay, so we're going with May 30th or 31st? May 31st. Okay. A minute. May 31st.
Yeah, there you go.
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
My next item on the agenda is, I'm going to let you know that with the passing of Captain Coldwood, I have one less administrative member or administrators, or I would call command staff. The only person eligible to take that position is my chief deputy. And he is civil service ranked, is going to become captain within the next week or so. But it's, I'm still one administrator or one command staff short. What I'd like to do is establish another lieutenant, which is going to cause two other promotions. Going to approach a sergeant to lieutenant, a sergeant, a corporal sergeant, and a deputy to corporal. In fact, what I, I'm asking you is the commission to realize that I'm going to come forward with you with motions sometime in the near future. The Civil Service Commission has said they can't, they don't dictate my staffing, but I want to come with you and give a heads up that I'm not going to just say, hey, I did these promotions, I want you all to know about it. And that there's going to be a new lieutenant, a new sergeant, a new corporal.
And there will be financially impacted.
Yes, ma'am, there will, there will be.
And you'll let us know.
Yes, ma'am. And right, and right now in my budget, I have money, I have money to pay that. But, you know. Yes, ma'am, I will definitely, believe me. Okay. Next one is, I was going to ask to go to a session, but I'm going to refrain that. There's one of the items I was going to bring up, I'm not going to bring up. I had two deputies that in 2013, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office established a, a position or a, a administrative, what's the word I used? I gave it to you to read.
It wasn't fair for you to call me, sir.
No, I wasn't calling you, just I gave you the one paper I had.
What was your question?
Let me have it, and I'll get it back to you. I understand. In 2013, the Jefferson County Sheriff's has established a deputy first class designation. It is not a promotion, it's just a designation. They're still considered deputies. It's not a promotion nor is it ranked. It's solely an acknowledgement to the deputy who has not been promoted to corporal is given some acknowledgement of now you've got five years on the job. You get what, what we used to call in military a skeeter wing. Again, it's not a promotion, it's just a designation. Through a clerical error, my executive assistant readily admits it was hers. She had all of the dates of rank in her computer and it disappeared. I had two deputies that should have been promoted in deputy, to deputy first, or designated deputy first class, not promoted, but designated deputy first class in October. And they didn't get designated until, until January. The designation is a $500 annual bump. We always look, and that's in our budget. What I'm asking is the county to allow me to backdate there and give them back pay for that. Now, I know the county clerk has said that backdate's not allowed. But there is a conflicting opinion by the Attorney General on this. It come back really, backdate previously due, due to, but unpaid because of administrative error is not considered extra compensation. And I believe that these two deputies, deputies who are now designated deputy first class should be given the backdate to the January date that they should have been, as opposed to the January date they received.
And I've got, there's some other employees that are, I've got this as an agenda item later. I've got some employees in the same predicament that I wanted to present as well.
But, but I think, I think that, I think the Attorney General's opinion clearly states that it's not extra money, it's their, what they're due.
No, I don't disagree with you. I'm at the same opinion and I concur.
It's $500 a year, it's 25 cents an hour. So I just figure, I don't have the total number, but I can just give you, I can get, have my executive assistant deputy get with Krista on Monday and give you an exact number. But I'm just looking for the approval to do it.
Was it, was that in there or?
Yeah, it was under, it was under, originally under employee issue.
Okay.
Okay. But I told you that I was going to ask to go to a executive session for another, that plus another item. But I'm not going to bring the other item forward this time.
Before we proceed, I'd like to get our attorney's opinion.
I am not going to opine on this exact issue because there appears to be a dispute between the sheriff and the clerk. However, I would opine on this matters issues, which are some, I'm sorry, in stress.
Okay.
We're only, we're only heading into this.
Is it okay to stall the public hearing? I'm just asking for protocol on that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we just can't start before.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So the issue regarding the county administrators issues is I'm, is that there were some errors made regarding a few employees who received an, an increase on their anniversary date. And they did not actually receive an increase. And so what this resume, I think, is asking you to defer, not her, but employees in the departments of the she superintendent, is to make that right. And the underlying legal principle is if a, if an employee earns and is entitled, then they're entitled to. And if somehow there's some kind of clerical error or something that they don't get, then you know, their employer should make it right. And failure to do so.
I agree. It would be a wager. And that's all I'm trying to do is make it right.
And so, again, I'm specifically not opining on the sheriff's issue. But on this resume.
Okay.
That is, that is the legal principle.
Okay.
Can I address the sheriff's issue and then?
Yeah, we'll address that later, but he was landing it. So, yes, I agree. Can you give, I will be happy to move a motion to, to address that, but I need to know the name of the deputy.
There is Deputy Moffett and.
Moffett.
Moffett and Deputy, and you just went right out of my head.
Stefanovic.
Stefanovic, yes.
Nobody can spell that.
I can, yeah. I, I. All right. And you know, you know the back, the dates?
I don't, I don't have them in front of me.
And how could I address that in a motion when, when they, help me out here. So I'm putting it.
I think that you'll authorize it and, and we'll give you the, how much exactly it would be. But I don't have right now.
So you're asking to pay back to January 3rd?
Yeah, so Jack, I'm back to their, their date of, there should have been the date of rank. The date of, the date of, the date of appointments.
How about that? Appointment. Okay. All right, I'll move a motion to, to page, to backdate Deputy Moffett and Deputy.
Stefanovic.
Stefanovic to their back pay down to their date of appointment.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
All right. All right. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number three.
Are we going to drop my?
We'll do it. You got to wait.
Thanks. I'll be here anyway.
Come on up, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We're going to move on to Nancy Strahan, CBDC and Home Administrator for City of Martinsburg. This is a public hearing to discuss the housing needs of Jefferson County for FY23, Home Investment Partnership Trivial Resolution authorizing participation in the Home Panhandle Consortium of West Virginia for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm also the Home Consortium Administrator for the Hope Eastern Panhandle. This is our, my fourth and last public hearing for the FY 2023 Home Investment Fund Program. I was in Morgan County yesterday. So we basically go out and do these public hearings to get public input so we can plan the use of our funds and receive public input. Home, which is Home Investment Fund Program, is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments designated exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. And how this works, it's the Home Consortium, it's Jefferson, Berkeley, Morgan, and the City of Martinsburg. But the City of Martinsburg is the caucus agency that administers the grant. We've been participating with the home program since 2007. We've received 7.1 million for assistance for these areas. And how that works is we have an Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium Board. Every area gets three members and we meet quarterly. We just had a very good meeting on Monday. And I really want to thank this time, one of your representatives here for Jefferson County is Annette Van Hill. She's been really, been there. Because right now we have two vacancies. So I can't have quarter unless I get Annette Van. So she has been holding the fort for, for you. And she's been doing a lot. She went out to, when Habitat was building the house in Shepherdstown. She went to a lot of the things and then I went to the one thing. So she's been really great for you. What we do is predominantly, we put the funding in our Housing Assistance Program. It's called HAF. And what that does is it gives individual first-time home buyers gap financing to pay for closing costs or down payment. This past year, we did 22 with gap financing. It's a little less than last year. We did six in Jefferson County. Last year we did 10. But remember, a few years back, we were really having problems. So we've been doing, still a good bit of, still getting a lot of requests from Jefferson County. Just to let you know, the houses' price range from a low of $145,000 in Harpers Ferry to 170, to 175 in Charlestown. And they were actually neighbors. And they, they actually settled like two weeks apart and didn't even know it. But in the Willbrook neighborhood, so. And then there was a $217,000 house in Charlestown, 2019, in Charlestown. And then 182 in Ransum. The median sales price for Jefferson's around $349,000. So it's really hard to find affordable housing and things have been slowing down. And that's why we had a big meeting on Monday. But I just did a look at what's available in Jefferson County for, I mean, you've got these brand-new townhouses on Norbourn, Glebe, Glebe, for $352,770. That's way over the limits for a low-income, for a low-income buyer. For Jefferson County, our, for new homes, it's 25800. So I've been working with some folks in Ransum. And we're trying to work with a developer. And he wants to do affordable housing. And he's going to make, try to make sure that the housing cost doesn't go over. Even though this will go up a little bit, it won't go up to 350. So we're trying to make, you know, try to get in early so we can help get some more affordable housing. I even found like a house, a really nice-looking house, two-bedroom, two-bath in Charlestown, $385,000. So it's just really difficult for, now that the investors have gotten out of the market, the interest rates have gone up, but now the problem is the prices. So it's real, you know, affordability issue is still there. So we're spending more and more time assisting these folks. Then I told you the other thing, yeah, so I've told you just about everything. But we are working, like I said, with Ransum. And we also have that Home ARC, which is our American Rescue Program. And we had a very successful meeting here the other week. And we had 12 participants come to it. And so we were trying to make sure that Jefferson County ministries will get some of that funding. So we're hoping that a good majority of the non-congregate shelter money will go to them. So they're going to wait to do their building till when that money comes out. And I know you'll be with that. So we are working with them and some other nonprofits that work in that area. So there's been a lot of housing issues lately. Are there any questions from the public at the program?
We, we will take public comment here in a minute.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Does anybody have any questions for the?
Well, I know in, with you included in our packet, you're looking for board members and so forth. So I just want to find out, so everybody knows, where are your meetings? How often do you meet?
We meet quarterly. And we were meeting exclusively on June, but we had our first, we had, well, we sometimes meet. City, the City of Martinsburg has a temporary office on Viking Way. So we did finally have our meeting there. And we also did Zoom.
Oh, okay. And then there's possibly a meeting location.
Right, right. But we, the Morgan County participants like the Zoom too. Phil Clark is the chairman and he was in the middle of his budget. So he would think we'll just zoom in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, well, good deal. We're going to open it up for public comment. I don't know if we'll have public comment or not. But is anybody here would like to speak? One is first. All right, well, Mrs. Strahan, if you could take a seat, we're going, we'll have people come out and make public comments. There's some, yes, people want to come up there. Yeah, we'll have you back up.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Those who are making public comment, you'll have up to three minutes to make public comment. You're more welcome to come up and make, if you can state your name.
I'm Tina, I'm Circuit Clerk of Jefferson County. I just want to say, I have been looking at this market and it's, it's sad. We got to get some people's focus on this, especially in Jefferson County. There's a lot of people that are just barely getting by with inflation and stuff and there's nowhere to go. And I think that the landlords are also taking advantage of this and raising up the prices on people that couldn't afford it. And if you happen to look outside of the first and the second of the month, you'll see trucks with furniture on them just moving all over the place because it's nuts. I would like to volunteer if I can. Can I do that without being in conflict of interest or whatever, to help and get the word out to anyone that could go with us?
Certainly. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Is there anybody else like me? Would like to make public comment on this agenda item? All right, here, none of, there are no objections, the public comment is closed. Thank you. All right. Does anybody else have any questions from, from Mrs. Strahan?
You said you meet Mondays? Well, we meet quarterly and I have the schedule for the rest of the year. I can send it to. Thank you. And it's open, you can tell me. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, and you need a motion to approve the resolution?
Correct.
All right, I'll, I'll be happy to approve the resolution authorizing participation in the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024.
That's it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, answer. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next, we're, the, the next public hearing is tabled or canceled. We have another public hearing at 7:00. So what we're going to do is move to another. What's that?
I was just going to say, some, some service.
Yeah. Where do you want to go to? We can take in a few things before the next public hearing. Yeah, Krista, you want to come up and do that? We're going to move on to the financial director's report, the internal budget revision.
The first item on the agenda is regarding an internal budget transfer to, in the amount of $5,326.73 from Professional Services to Travel to cover travel expenses for commissioners. And those expenses were related to the WVACO Conference and the CCAWD Conferences. Both are which resources for county government officials and staff to keep in the know about each other, about state law and its impact on counties and their citizens. And then that's WVACO and then CCAWD is the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia. And their mission is to maintain a statewide agency for the purpose of promoting the interest in general welfare of local county government through communication tools representing county government before the West Virginia Legislature, administrative agencies, and the federal government. So definitely, it seems like that's a good purpose for our commissioners. We have a new commissioner and, I mean, just to be completely transparent, it probably doesn't look like budgeted for, for travel for a new commissioner to attend these things.
I just would like to say something to that, that I attended both trainings, the Association of Counties and the County Commissioner Association, and found them to be very, very helpful and informative. They were great and I highly recommend them. I kept hearing while I was there about, you know, encourage more people to come, even if you're not brand-new, there's always something new to learn. And I just found it very, very helpful.
Yeah, I could bring, I went to the West Virginia Association of Counties and it is a great resource to, to us and other county officials, but to go and share resources, we may be diverse in size compared to some of the other counties, but we have the same issues. So it's nice to have a network and, and someone to network with.
Yes, yes. We have a communication with commissioners and other electors throughout the state, which is quite helpful to be able to say, hey, are you having this problem in your area or how did you solve it or whatever? But it's, it's been very helpful.
So Krista, I guess the only one question with the transfers is, is this to catch us up or is this to cover expenses for the remainder of this fiscal year?
It should just be for the remainder of this fiscal year. We're not anticipating any additional travel between now and the end of the fiscal year. So I think it'll just, once we do the transfer, that'll be it for FY23. And I did bump up the FY24 travel number a little bit in case you want to attend next year.
Well, and we do have the state auditors conference that comes up, that's usually mandatory for us.
So, yeah, we've got some of them.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any questions? I'll move, I'll move to approve the internal budget revision, FY24 funds from Professional Services to travel in the amount of $5,326.73.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Okay, so to the next item on the agenda, it is a JCESA invoice 439 dated March 3rd for labor costs for the EMS transition project for January of 2023. Yeah.
I'll approve the invoice 439, March 3rd, 2023, for JCESA in the amount of $8,642.23. This is the labor cost association with EMS transition project.
Second?
Any discussion?
I just have a question, again, when you get a chance, Krista, can we get a total of what we dispense? I know we're doing it in segments by month. What's with that labor costs?
Just for, for transitions.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor, just say aye. That is, motion carries.
Thank you.
MOU, did you, you going to talk about Shepherd, MOU or the one that sent you? If you want to do that now, you want to do that later? You have five minutes? Yeah, exactly.
Or Stephen Vatie, I just.
Or we could, we could take, we could take.
You need five minutes?
I don't need five minutes, I talk very fast.
Yeah, because we, um, okay. All right, well, let's move to, let's move to number six then. This is, we're going to, we're kind of jumping around here because we have a public hearing. Those people are watching online, wondering why we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing at 7:00 and we're trying to get some things out of the way before that public hearing on Gen I number five.
Commissioners, I would, with regard to this issue, there is some, there is.
This is for Gen I number six?
Yeah. There is a, there is an issue that we're working through relating to representation of this. Because of that, I'm going to.
Fair enough, okay. All right, so we're on Gen I number six. Steve Cox and Nancy Nelson, Jefferson County Sheriff's Civil Service Commission. This is request guidance for the county commissioner's signature.
Good evening, Commissioners and Assistant Jefferson County. So I made mention to during our budget presentation, as I mentioned, we are going to be in supply and we're moving to a company called IO Solutions. We're not aware of until recently is that there is a type of that, okay? Cautionously as we possibly can, we start advice from. March 8th, to turn, matter of fact, responded, the Office of the Prosecuting and Interrogating Service has designated a term for the county commission. As such, we cannot provide legal advice that could be in direct conflict with representation. Further advising us to seek guidance from you all. So I have this contract with this testing agency. And again, the testing agency supplies tests for appointment or new deputies in all of our promotional stuff. I have a very brief synopsis of the contract, if you'd like to hear it from me, or there's a six-page contract that I can send out to you guys and you can read. So my question to you is, as the President of the Commission, am I permitted to enter into this contract? Before testing occurs? Which, what is the pleasure of the Commission?
I think we approve all payments, I mean, all purchase orders. So I think it needs to come before us and we appointed you, but that's kind of the way it's money flows.
Yeah. So if that is the situation, then there needs to be one representative from you all every time we. So if that is the situation, then there needs to be one representative from you all every time we.